Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission study session tonight. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings app, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of those options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the Agenda packet on the City website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit questions. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 p.m. and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. We moved the Agenda around a little bit. The first item on the Agenda is to discuss the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commission. Last week's City Commission meeting, the City Commission gave consensus to put the Agenda item tonight to consider providing consensus to allow the St. Patrick's Day Parade to move forward with application to the City and whether to move forward with the process or to cancel the parade for 2021. Staff did a little bit of work as requested by the Commission. There aren't that many large-scale St. Patrick's Day parades in the area, so there's not a lot to go on as far as precedent about what's going on. We did have two. One was in Lawrence, the city of Lawrence has... The city itself has put a moratorium on all of these types of events until after April 1st, which essentially cancels their parade. And of course, North Kansas City has moved their Snake Saturday Parade to October 23rd, 2021, but that's about all we found. There are some small community ones, but those probably aren't applicable to the size and scope of ours. So that's about all I found on that. And it's before you tonight, just for open discussion, and I know we have a representative here from the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee.
Okay. Would you like to speak, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
Do you want him up here or over here for the study session?
He goes to the seat.
Okay. I'm gonna sit up here at the table. The electric chair?
Okay, I just had a few things I wrote down because I didn't want to forget.
Say your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Tim Scanlon, 1428 Olive Street, Leavenworth, Kansas 66048-2263.
Thank you, sir.
Ex-mail, man. First of all, I just wanted to thank you all for letting us come in here. And we just have some concerns. We haven't had a meeting yet because I know it's all on the City. We normally have our invitations sent out first part of January. So I'm not gonna send them out and then turn around and it gets canceled. And, you know, I heard talk about or read in the paper about moving it, and I said, the Irish are not gonna move it. You know, that'd be like moving Christmas to summertime or 4th of July to fall when it's cooler. It's not gonna be on March 17th when I have the parade. And then the other concerns we had, we got notice from Riley about filling out the insurance application. Well, last year when the parade got canceled, the City did give us back our permit fee, but we lost several hundred dollars on the insurance. And it was from the underwriters, they said it was not their fault that the parade did not go through. And I said, well, by the same token, it was not our fault the parade didn't go through. So we had to eat that. And there was another question that was brought up, is there any repentance to be from the City or anywhere over that? You know, because like I said, it was not our fault either that the original parade was canceled. And then the other thing is, over the years, 38 years, we've given over $30,000 to St. Vincent's. Well, we were blessed last year. We asked for donations. We don't charge you donation to get in the parade. And everybody, we offered them a refund last year, and they all said, no, keep the money because we know where it goes. So I'm not gonna put shamrock stuff in the pub or ask people for money if you're not gonna have a parade, because to me, that's under false pretense, and I don't operate that way. And then, as far as the parades go, this year it falls out on a Wednesday, which traditionally the lowest attendance day of the parade. The people don't make a long weekend out of it, it's in the middle of the week. And even if the parade's canceled, the pubs will be open, because I owned a bar the year before the parade started, and I had a three or four years afterward. The people are in the bar. So, I mean, even if you shut the parade down, you're not gonna shut the bars down unless that comes on another meeting or something. And I mean, it's like a high holy day in Ireland, but it's also a day of celebration for all of the Irish around the world. So, you know, you're not gonna shut them down whether you shut the parade down or not. It will go on. And the last thing, I mean, like I said, you know, I don't know what the decision is to be made. It's not up to me. I was not happy last year, I think. I made that clear. But, you know, last year, five days prior, after three months of fundraising and meetings and everything, we just shut down. And I don't wanna get stiff like that again this year. So, and the other thing that really kinda galled me was, back in March of '20, Leavenworth County had zero COVID cases and zero deaths, and they shut us down. And then eight months later in November, they allowed the Veterans' Day Parade to proceed, and there'd been over 4,000 confirmed cases and 30-plus deaths. So that just kinda boggled my mind. So that's about all the notes that I had.
Well, in defense of the City, Scanlon, I appreciate your comments. We did know what we didn't know at that particular point in time. So, and believe me, it was not a popular decision, it was a very tough decision. But we didn't know what we didn't know. And, you know, if it had been a few months later, we quite possibly would have made a would have made or could have made, could have made or would have made a different decision. So that's the only thing I would push back a little bit on. And I think it's good that you're here tonight, so we can have a discussion.
If you can't do any fundraiser and anything, I know the insurance is very expensive. How are you gonna be able to afford that without doing your usual fundraising?
Well, as you said, I don't wanna get... How many t-shirts did we have to eat last year because the parade didn't go on, and we sell a bunch of them the day of the parade? And that's our major, basically, our only fundraiser besides the shamrock. So, you know, not only did we use that, you know, and the people...
So even no matter what we say tonight, if, I mean, you would have to go back and, I mean, even with, even if we said it would be okay to do the parade, you'd still have to work those details out with your committee to see if you can even approach to do it.
Yeah, I mean, the Committee still wants to do it. I think we could, if we're still in the month of January, we could pull it off. But like I said, a lot of these fraternal organizations only meet once a month, they make the invitations, and they like to take them before their boards, before they make a decision. And so that's why we try to get them out the first of the month of January to let people in the public know.
And Mr. Scanlon, how many years have you...
This'll be the 38th.
38th year, and you've been during it the whole time, or the Scanlon family?
Yeah. Darlene and Mike Kenny and myself started it, and we've all... Mike's the only one left. Darlene and Dominic came in later on to help Darlene out.
Right.
And they both passed, yeah. That's the only way you get off this Committee. They'll get you as far as...
Yeah, lifelong commitment.
Mr. Kramer, has there been any discussion with the county health officer on a parade?
I did. I did reach out to Jamie Miller. Mr. Miller thought that there are a few things that the parade had going for it this year that it didn't last year. A lot of things have changed, indicating that it is outside, that the vaccine rollout has started, that people are much more knowledgeable about social distancing en masse. The City also has developed over the summer and into the fall, per requirement, that any city events that we do allow to go on provide the City with what we call sort of a COVID mitigation plan. The Veterans' Day Parade Committee did this, and it's not overly burdensome. And we've shared examples with organizations. It's usually a one-page thing that says, we're gonna encourage this, we're gonna ask this. Veterans' Day Parade Committee, we worked with them to cancel the viewing stand and some of the reception events, the more closed networking things that aren't in motion, kinda like the parade itself. But the health officer did think that there were avenues that would make this event be able to happen this year, being about 60 days out, and have already started the vaccination within the county.
And Mr. Scanlon, obviously you have no control over the bars. You know, that's private businesses, but, you know, normally I think there was probably a VIP reception down...
Yeah, last year we just had a small one in the church basement.
Okay. You know, they had a lunch VIP viewing stand. Are you gonna have that this year?
Obviously, if they didn't want it at the Veterans' Day Parade, I don't wanna go to Kansas City. They'll just have to, you know... And actually, you've been up there before. There's really not that many people on there.
No, there isn't.
It's just, you know, they eliminate some of the social functions around it, obviously. I'm not talking about the bars.
You would not have the reception afterwards.
Yeah. I think you can see your outdoors. People are more, as the City Manager said, more knowledgeable on COVID now. It's not as mysterious as it once was, and common sense prevails.
You could say what else to say.
I don't see any problem in doing it, and I would like to go for it. On your insurance from last year, and I'm not an attorney, and I don't know if you wanna hire an attorney, I think the insurance company should refund you and claim a force...
There was no reflection on Riley, is there?
No, I know that.
From the underwriter.
Yeah, but it's a force majeure case, but you probably have to hire an attorney to do it. And those are acts of God that shouldn't negate, you know, should get you money back. But insurance companies are great at saying, telling you no.
Well, there were a lot of events canceled that probably had the same, some of the same issues too this year, so... Commissioner Lee Hart, you have any comments?
Well, I was just gonna say you could probably still have the, because I think the Veterans' Day did. Didn't they have a, like, an announcer that announced the floats, or did they?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could still have that.
Have an announcer.
You know, and I don't know, how many floats do you usually have?
Ours is not very big. We're usually over in about an hour. I think our biggest one was...
About 50 ish total.
Yeah, the average is, I think the biggest one we ever had was like the first one, it was about 105 or something. So the parade is usually over in an hour.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions or comments on this?
Yes, I'm definitely in support of moving forward with having the parade. Is there gonna, are you gonna have, will all organizations still be allowed to submit to participate in the parade, or are you gonna limit the participation? That's the only question I have.
As far as I'm concerned, we're sending out the same invitations we always have, and we're gonna leave that up to the individuals.
That's not part of the mitigation? Is it limiting the number of entries in something like this?
No, we, you know, the Veterans' Day Parade, they can get up well over 200. And so it was sort of a mutual agreement between they and the City that we try to make it a little bit smaller, but this is already naturally smaller than what they did.
Smaller, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But once again, too, we have no control on it, you know. We don't say...
You're not gonna turn any way.
Yeah. You know, we've never had to turn any way anybody down before. We just don't get that many.
So, I'm sorry. Another example that we try to work with the Veterans' Day Parade Committee is if, you know, in the past, I don't know if they have had choirs or something like that projecting, that we try to avoid, you know, that, that it be, you know, your normal stuff, but the same stuff you've seen from some of the CDC stuff, marching bands or specifically singing out loud group choirs, that where you won't be able to protect yourself and stuff like that, but...
Right, because a lot of your floats have music and stuff, but they're not, you know, they don't have that music.
Yeah, the social marching band is the only band we have. Richard Vaughan.
Yeah, I don't know if they would even, that wouldn't work.
Yeah, the school has probably been pretty reluctant on, they canceled their homecoming parade and stuff like that as far as their stuff, so that would be up to them.
Will participants on the float or whatever...
We can put that on there as well.
They'll be masked.
Yeah, they require them to be masked in the same way as we always give them.
They'll be outside, so they won't be required to be...
Yeah, but no candy throwing and stuff.
Since they're outside.
You know, I'm saying if they're on a float, a lot of people on a float.
We will put that out there, but like I said, we don't.
Okay.
The people turn up, somebody in about throwing candy, we're on them at every corner for all good. So I finally told one of the officers one year, I said, arrest them!
Yeah, I know, he did.
They've been told four times.
I got tired of yelling at people without candy, because that was, that was an issue, that was such a dangerous thing, so...
But yeah, we can include this, the mask in there.
Commissioner Wilson, done?
Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything more or any other questions?
No, I feel, like I feel looking forward to having it this year.
Thank you.
Hate to be the snunk at the garden party, but I think it's, I think it's too, I think it's a little too early to make a decision. And you're talking about the parade, and I love parades. I think the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the Veterans' Day Parade, I love them. They're great events for the city of Leavenworth and the county of Leavenworth and really beyond our, you know, immediate geographical region. But when we had the parade and Veterans' Day, I think the positivity rate was about 5, 6, 7 percent. Last week, I talked about, over the last six weeks up until last Tuesday, we'd had a decrease from about 16 and a half percent to about 9 percent, which is good, but still not, it's still greater than it was, you know, during the Veterans' Day Parade. It went up a little bit last week to about 10 percent. We don't have the data for this week, so what's it gonna be tomorrow? I don't know.
Well, the problem is, when you plan a parade, it takes some time.
I understand, but, I mean, I just, you know, we've been very rigorous about looking at the data and checking with our county health officer. I'm a little surprised that, you know, he, I mean, I got it, we're outside, but like I said, if people don't have to wear a mask, I hope they do. And I think our general public was really good during the Veterans' Day Parade, but no, but the situation now with the virus is worse than it was back in early November, and it got a little better for about six weeks until last Tuesday.
Yeah.
So all I was suggesting is that, I mean, if we were to make a decision on the 2nd of February, is that two weeks?
We'll have to go with it. I mean, we got a loyal bunch of followers. If I tell them, then they'll, they'll jump on it, and they'll...
I just think we should wait to, and we will make a decision. I mean, I wouldn't mind having, being able to ask our county health officer a few questions, because I'm a little surprised that he, I mean, it's good, but I kinda would ask him some questions about, you know, whether there's anything that you're concerned about.
March is a month and a half away, that's, or two months now, I guess.
Two months, yeah, that's why I was saying, that's what I, that's what I think, but that's one Commissioner, and I just think we need to be careful, and certainly, situation now is better than it was at the end of November, the beginning of December, but it's not as good as it was when we had the Veterans' Day Parade. And you're gonna bring a lot of people downtown, so you're gonna get more people in the bars and restaurants and stuff like that. And I know we have our mask ordinance for that situation, but...
That's where it's most critical.
So I'm being a little, you know, being a little conservative and a little cautious, but I, that's my viewpoint.
They also pulled, like, 10 penny only had this amount of tables up, and they pulled out more of them even on last St. Patrick's Day, when that mandates were just coming down, and they shut the pubs down on St. Patrick's Day. So they've already got their boost and everything, limited.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it would've been nice to have gotten the stats today, but not yesterday.
Yeah.
Did that come out today?
No.
No, I think they said tomorrow, maybe it's in the holidays.
Because of the holiday.
The average number of cases on 14-day, we averaged on Monday, but unfortunately, we're gonna hit those tomorrow.
It's still been running a 6 percent increase in the county for the last two weeks. I follow the increases for each week, and it's still running 6 percent increase, so... Do you think the February...
I mean, I wouldn't wanna go much past runoff day, because people still have to plan this stuff.
Is the insurance company okay with that?
Usually we have to have it in by mid-February, later than a month. I don't have my email in front of me, but what she said, usually, because when she wanted us to come down there, she said, no rush, I have to have it though by mid-February. Usually like a month before, we have to cut a check.
I mean, the other thing is, is I know the vaccinations are rolling out, but I mean, the general public, you know, as of yet hasn't had access to the vaccination, so it's good. I mean, the program's beginning, but, I mean, it'll be two weeks further along on the 2nd of February, so...
Okay, other Commissioners, are you okay with waiting until February 2nd?
I agree with Mr. Scanlon's, if you look at the whole picture, Wednesday is a very slow day for, you know, if it's on a St. Patrick's Day, if it's on a Monday, you know, they start it on a Friday, and if it's on a Thursday, they take Thursday, Friday off. Wednesday, it's slower. I think people are naturally gonna be somewhat reticent on going to parades, so I think it's your, the number of people there is gonna be sparse compared to previous years. I know that we don't have the data yet or the complete rollout on the vaccinations, but I've gotta believe by March 17th, a very large percentage of people will have their double dose, some of them only a single dose, maybe they get the J&amp;J one. I, in common sense, if there's no reviewing stand, you know, no official social function, just people marching down the street, I think it's possible, especially since it's outside. Obviously, we can't control the bars, that's a different thing. I am, you know, I can wait until February 2nd, but I'd be willing to say go for it now and just hope for good weather. If you have bad weather, no one's gonna be there. Nice spring days, people will be spread out.
That's years ago, it's regressive.
Oh, we still have the people. The floats never can.
No, you're...
Because they know what time of the year it is and...
Now, if it's raining, the car clubs don't show up because of what the weather is doing.
That's when they're 3:40, you know. I don't think they're gonna be that way this year. Everybody is, not everybody, but people are kinda lucky.
Well, I'm telling you, people like, my wife, she wouldn't have come, you know, to a crowd. She didn't go down to Veterans' Day, she watched out the window at night.
No, I understand.
So, because she didn't wanna be in the crowds, and we may not have the crowds. I mean...
No, I agree. But if the consensus is February 2nd, I'm okay.
Commissioner Wilson said he was okay to go with it now, is that correct, sir?
Yes, I'm just saying we're moving forward with it, and, you know, like Commissioner Pricey just said, you know, around March time, I'm looking forward that, you know, that cases start to drop, decrease, and we have some good luck there. And look again, you know, in the middle of the week, I don't think it's gonna attract a lot of people as it would compared to a weekend. And the question that I do have, if we do wait until February 2nd, is it gonna delay the numbers we have to promote, and is that going to reduce the amount of participants that would participate if we wait that long?
Sure isn't gonna help any, is all that, you know. I mean, it's not gonna help us out any, but we're willing that, if that's what our situation is, to me, it's better than canceling it.
Yeah, and I'm willing, yeah, and I'm willing to move forward with, I'm willing to be up, because of the things that we're gonna be up to have.
What did he say?
Madam Mayor, just wanted to, so, yeah, I'm, no, and I'm not pessimist, I'm kinda in the middle. I just, I just think I'm being consistent with kind of my view of this whole thing.
Like, I know, having worked on the parade...
And I don't wanna, you know, if we say yes tonight, and then there's two weeks of really bad data, and who knows? I don't know. And I think I wouldn't wanna come and have to tell Mr. Scanlon, no.
Well, if we have, yeah, and the thing is, if you wait until February, I know, since most everything's done by email now, very, very little is done by email.
That helps a lot.
So it makes it go a lot faster, getting the word out.
And then I don't Facebook, but the rest of the world does, so I don't know.
And getting the response. So I think you could get a pretty good response to what you're gonna have if we wait until...
And I'm not a non-masker or anything, but I just think these projections, it's like reading tea leaves or having a crystal ball, because, you know, they don't seem to know. And it's no, I'm not being derogatory to anybody, but, you know, it's this way and that way, and no one seems to know why, so that's, you know, but that's just my opinion on it. Like I said, I'm not being derogatory towards anyone, but...
Mr. Kramer, if you could go ahead and send him the mitigation.
I was gonna just say, we're gonna move this to the second. Why don't we work with Mr. Scanlon, and so that time we could present the Commission maybe a draft of what...
And then we have more information on everything.
And again, it's not super complex, and we've done half a dozen of these, so we can share you some examples.
Okay. So is there a consensus to wait till the 2nd of February?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Do I have to come back?
We wanna see him.
You don't have to, unless we have questions, you know, but it's good to have, it's good to have you answer questions.
But we wanna, current t-shirt.
Well, two years old. Not getting those printed either. Or one out on standby.
I got, yeah, I got last year's, I'm just gonna print COVID, COVID survivor on the side.
Okay, then, well, okay, and bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry we couldn't give you an answer tonight.
Well, that's the way it goes.
Have a good evening. Thank you, Beth. Okay, thank you for doing that. Next item on the Agenda, review the small cell facilities fees and agreements.
Madam Mayor and Commission, I'm gonna brief you on a little bit of a new item that's coming before the City. There's no action tonight, just some information from staff, and then it'll come back before you. So, small cell wireless providers' fees and agreements is the subject, and we're basically talking about these small cell facilities. Taylor's gonna put one up on the map so you can see. There are essentially shoebox-sized antennas or boosters that sit on public infrastructure, and they are designed to enhance cellphone connectivity. So they're strategically deployed in areas of cities where they would have lapses in coverage, and there would be different providers throughout the city. So what this is, this originated in 2016, as Governor Brownback signed into law a bill known as the Kansas Wireless Sitting Act. And so the cities, although we have very little control over where these go, we do have to come to an agreement with wireless providers for use of city right-of-way and city infrastructure. So a lot of that work has been done for you. You don't have a lot of latitude and fees you can charge, you don't have a lot of latitude and restrictions you can put on this. City does retain some limited right-of-way rights related to safety, site distances and stuff like that, and some notification requirements that the cellphone provider has to do to the City or the Public Works Department. But at the end of the day, the state law indicates that this is a public good essentially, and that these wireless providers have the right to use infrastructure or right-of-way to place these, these functions. If it's a city pole, we would work with the provider, and this one is AT&amp;T tonight, but eventually, most everybody will go this route. And if it's a Westar pole, it is incumbent upon them, AT&amp;T, to come to an agreement with Westar for the use of their poles. So what the City has to do is have an agreement, and then the City has to amend our schedule of fees, again, to put a fee in place, an installation fee, and then you're allowed to do some sort of ongoing fee, not tied to revenue or anything that's strictly prohibited. We are in an advantageous position in that our City Attorney, David Waters, helped craft this legislation. He helped craft the agreements, the framework for all the funding that's required, and he has fully vetted this, and he will be here next week. So what you'll see, and what I'm briefing you on, is what we'll come back to you is the amendments to the schedule of fees that the City's gonna put in place for these wireless providers. This doesn't mean that one's coming to the City of Love North. It was pointed out to me, it could be two or three years. It could be, what it does is it puts the mechanism in place that then would allow AT&amp;T in this case to continue to evaluate the market, see where there's areas, and then deploy these in the future. I believe the count right now is seven Johnson County cities that they've executed these with now, these agreements, and so they're just essentially now working their way through, on the Kansas side, because this is new Kansas legislation, to put these in place in all the communities, so that at some point that they felt appropriate, they would come back and beginning deploying these solutions in lapses in their coverage.
I'm glad you looked into here, that's, it's good.
This is all the commercial or the city or county, what we do, I have one or two extenders in my house that kind of extend the signal. I mean, that's not a technical term, but it does help. So I saw, I saw that, I saw this initiative is somewhat similar to that, but the only question I had on the fees was, do we, inspection fee, I mean, do we think that we would, what would be our need to inspect? Would it be maybe at the beginning, or, you know, once they have it in, or is it something that's gonna be done annually? Do we have any ideas?
Yeah, so, again, the initial would be the first one to ensure that any installation doesn't interfere with city infrastructure on a post. The City doesn't own very many poles. Everything that's signalized in the City that has a traffic signal, we own, and then most, other than that, it's really limited to 20th Street, those are city poles, and Delaware Street, the streetscape poles are city poles, and there's odds and ends here and there throughout the city, but those are basically what it's limited to. And then there would be an need probably to do an annual inspection to ensure that they were in good working order, that they weren't. You are allowed to make some aesthetic evaluations to make sure that they're done in a tasteful manner. My understanding so far is that AT&amp;T has worked well with communities to disguise these the best they can. But make no mistake, they are there to serve, and they will use this provision once it's put in place to improve service, so...
Good to be here.
That's about all the relevant highlights, I think, on this one.
Okay. Any other questions on this issue or... Okay, um, next item is review demolition process.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over in just a second to our community development director, Julie Hurley. The commission had indicated a desire to review our demolition process, maybe not necessarily going to make this changes, but to reevaluate what we have in place. It's been a while since we've evaluated the process we have, so Julie's going to go through kind of what we have, some ideas we have to make it flow better, and then some other options.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As Paul said, we're just bringing this for you tonight to kind of refresh all of you on what our process is. It seems like every year, we get a little bit out of hand with it. I know we do as staff, it's a complicated and lengthy process, so just kind of a good idea to revisit it. So, I did include our internal operating procedures for you to take a look at, and that just kind of illustrates how many steps we do have to go through. It's not just a kind of a one-two punch, there's a lot that we have to go through on a staff level before we even get to the commission with a property, and then after it goes to the commission, there are a lot of steps that we have to do then on the back end before something actually comes down. So, that's in there for you to have reviewed. So, just kind of briefly, an overview of what we do. Our code enforcement staff, since they're the ones out in the field on a daily basis, and they're familiar with the different properties in town, they start with identifying the properties that might be eligible for demolition. We only take down vacant properties, we never identify properties that are inhabited. So, once those have been identified, we work with code enforcement staff to come up with a list of all exterior property maintenance items that would need to be taken care of in order to get the property into conformance with our property maintenance codes. Then we contact those property owners, make an initial contact, let them know that their property's been identified, we let them know the items that need to be taken care of, we ask that they contact us to give us a chance to kind of work with them, to start that process, and start making those improvements before we move ahead officially. Then it'll start coming to the commission, as you know, you'll first, we do kind of an overview at a study session, direct us to move ahead with them or not. Once we do that, we have a number of steps that we take in terms of pulling title work and providing legal notifications, that type of thing. Then the commission would hold a public hearing, of course, vote either to proceed with demolition, give an extension, or remove a property from the list. At that point is when the property owners would have the chance to come and speak to you all about their plans, or lack thereof, and kind of their thoughts for their property. So, then, once properties are approved for demolition, we do work to, like I said, we have a lot of other steps that we have to go through in terms of getting those ready to actually come down, and that is a minimum of a six-week process. We can't really circumvent those steps to get them down quicker once they've been identified for demolition. So, that is in there with all of our steps. Every year, when we ramp up a demolition process, we go through internally and try to kind of refine that for ourselves. We're always coming up with things that, okay, we could have done that better, that needs to be changed, and so we change that a little bit easier just for us. As Paul said, there are a few things that we've talked about amongst staff internally that we think would be helpful. One thing is a remediation agreement, and that's the document that we send to property owners listing the items that need to be done. Our thought is, there's usually five, six, seven items on there that we list out. Usually, there's one or two things that are the most egregious violations that really needs to be taken care of first. So, what we thought we could do is work on some sort of hierarchy for that, and identify for property owners, here's the item or two that has to be done in order to get this off the demolition list. If you complete that, we can take you off the list. Here are these other items that still need to be done. If you do these top one or two, you can come off the list, and then code enforcement is going to work those other items and take that through a code enforcement process, which, you know, may end up in court, but, you know, our hope is always to get property owners to make those improvements. And as you know, what we run into is a property owner may work on one item, but it's not really taking care of the most pressing issue, and so then we're in a position of, well, you're spending money on it, but what are we going to do? And it's difficult for everybody, so that's one thought on that. Another idea we had is notifying neighboring property owners within a certain radius. We do that for other applications that we process in our department, specialty permits, rezonings, state statute requires that we notify property owners on those. We don't have a requirement to notify on these, but as you know, these properties do affect a neighborhood, and so it is helpful for us and for you also to hear from neighbors on what that effect has been. And so, I thought was to just send out sort of an informal notification to property owners, hey, this has been identified, here's when the public hearing is, if you'd like to contact and have some say in that. So, those are a few things that we've thought of. I did include a page in here from Unified Government, they have a pretty robust demolition program. They take down a lot more than we do each year, and there's this kind of an ongoing annual process. They do a lot of things that we've looked at, and we feel like are maybe a little more than what we would want to get into, and things that would make the process a lot more difficult for us to manage and for you to manage as well. So, overall, we're pretty happy with our process, so we just really would like to refine it. We're going to work on getting more consistent with the information that we bring to you as they come through, since you're seeing some of these, you know, two, three, and four times, and so work on that from that end. So, you know, we're open to suggestions or questions that you might have, if there's anything that you've seen that would make it easier for you, that we could do, you know, we're certainly happy to work on that.
Okay. I like the idea of prioritizing, because sometimes you see a house that's being worked on, and you see a little paint slapped on it, and yet the roof is still falling in. So, I like, I really do like that idea, and I think it would give us a lot more information notifying the neighbors as well. I just have a question. How, okay, you're determining that house is vacant, is there any way to determine how long the house has been vacant?
So, the way we do that is by the last date of water service.
Okay.
That is what we've found to be the most reliable method. Sometimes electricity will be left on, even if something's vacant, water service is one that is typically off when somebody moves out, and it has to be on if somebody's there. So, we check the date of water service on all of our...
I think that would be good for us to know as well, how long it's been vacant.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, any other...
No, I...
Questions I had?
Right, no, I agree, notifying the neighbors, and at least if they, you know, if they wanted to have a voice in the matter, or maybe know something else about the situation that they want to give us some information, just in general. But, no, that's all, yeah, that's all I have, and the prioritize, I'm right there with you.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything?
Can I have an idea? But do you mind mentioning, when it comes to the prioritizing, I know that would probably consider the roofs, and maybe what other items that would be considered main items that we need to complete before the, after remediation?
Yeah, obviously, it depends on the property, but as you've seen, a lot of times, the roof is that, that main thing that needs to be done. You know, if a roof is bad and you're getting water into a property, that, that causes so many other problems that, you know, repainting the outside is just not going to help. So, roof would be one major one. Another one that we see is windows, you know, if windows are broken out, warded up, that's something that really has to be done as well. So, it'll depend on the property, but you're correct, Commissioner Wilson, that a roof is typically going to be the biggest item that we see, and then those other property maintenance issues are, yeah, maybe a little bit lower on that priority list.
Something structural or that could be dangerous.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner, pricing or anything?
I agree, yeah, contact.
Will you finish? I'm sorry. Commissioner Wilson, will you finish?
Oh, I was just saying, great work on the staff. Yeah, I was just saying, great work on the staff, love the recommendations.
Thank you. Yes.
I agree with contacting the neighbors, and I think we should contact the neighbors within 500 feet, not just one on either side. 500 feet is approximately a block in town, but these have such an effect on property value and just the horrible look in the entire neighborhood that I think we go out, and we can do that very easy with GIS, you know, just draw a line 500 feet and send them all a letter, and invite them for comment, come to the meeting, or submit written comments. And I suspect many of them will come in and say, that place has been a dump for 10 years or eight years, whatever, and that will possibly give us a greater impetus to get moving on these things. I agree with having degrees of, call it a critical, then major minor, whatever it might be. The criticals, they have to be corrected within X amount of time, if it doesn't, you know, we can't just extend these forever. We've got to remember these neighbors that are living in this squalor. And the criticals, if they're not taken care of in whatever timeframe we give, and I would say 60 days from when we notify them, not when they come, because when they come and argue, and the 60 days are up, we're giving them another 60. Then, of course, they come one more time, you give them another 60. There we are, 180, or, you know, some of these now are already at 270, that have to be done, and they agree to it, or we tell them, they don't necessarily have to agree to it, but this has to be done. Then, once they're off the critical, we have to be very clear with them, you've got many other issues, and once you get this off the critical list, and we're not going to tear it down, code enforcement's going to be on you next week, and you're going to start getting, you know, fines possibly because the rest of your place is jock. So, they have to realize that, that this is a, you know, if they want to save this house, this is a big investment, time and money for them, not just slap on, as the mayor said, one coat of paint. Another thing that I would ask is, always with critical, is that the taxes are paid up-to-date, always. That's...
We can't, we couldn't consider the status of the taxes as far as the demolition.
We cannot.
No, it has to be, it has to be just the condition of the property.
Yeah, so, we do, yeah, we do pull that information, and we provide that the first time you see them, on kind of that worksheet that we have. And that is one of those things that, you know, I talked about being more consistent with what we take forward. So, we provide that the first time, but then we don't typically provide it going forward beyond that, so, and the same way with the date of lost water service. So, just making sure that you guys have that information every time you see it, so that's, you know, right in front of you.
Okay, we can't do taxes. And just quick question, we see a couple of properties again next week that we have...
Yes.
They're probably on our 300th day of extensions on...
Getting up there.
Yeah. So, and I invite any commissioners to go out and look at the properties, look at them closely, and maybe knock on a couple of neighbors' doors, and ask them pointed questions.
I'm not going to do that.
I mean, I've done a few, they've contacted me, they've contacted me.
Well, they have, yes, yes, absolutely.
And, you know, the people that have to live with this is horrible. That's all I have, thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Yes.
I thought the most interesting page was that one that you mentioned from Unified Government, from the demolition hearing, and I'm not, you know, it's pretty rigorous, but we've gone round and round, we're like two, three meetings with our one citizen who we've been trying to determine, or she's been trying to determine, we're trying to determine whether she has the funds to go ahead and make the, to make the repairs. I mean, there's some other things in terms of contractors and things like that, I'm not sure about that, but I kind of like, all parties are, well, if property owners indicate their interest is to repair the structure and bring it into code compliance, a list of requirements, and move to follow-up hearing is scheduled for 30 days later. All parties are required to show they have available to them the funds for total estimated cost of repair, I guess maybe through these priority items. One means of a letter, a bank letterhead, a grant or other documentation proving the funds are available to complete the repairs before any work can be done or permits application. I think I'm at least interested in discussing that, because I think that would kind of cut down on the 60 days and us going so subjectively, and how much money we spent on that. So, I thought this had some good things in it, particularly on the funds, but I don't know what my fellow, and then, you know, they have some skin in the game, you know, the owners of these properties have more skin in the game if we're a little bit more rigorous. So, I thought that's what was, and I appreciate, I agree on the remediation agreement, prioritization of the things that have to be done, notifying property owners, I'm all for that, but I think we need to consider what I just mentioned as part of the SOP or...
So, basically, the owner would have to go get estimates on everything and then...
Yeah, I don't know about everything in terms of the contractors and things like that, I don't know what you think about that, Ms. Hurley, but definitely on the, on the funding, so, I mean, just based on our recent experience over the last four, four, six months with the one property, and I think you probably had, I think that's been a factor with some other, other people too.
You would have to have an estimate.
Yeah, realistically, to provide those proof of funds, you would have to get the estimates from contractors. And one thing to take in consideration with that is, like with one of them that we've been discussing recently, sometimes you'll get community groups or folks that will want to come help someone make repairs that aren't necessarily maybe going to be completely out of pocket. A few years ago, we did try asking property owners to bring in proof of funds, and this is just kind of is what it is, but folks are very leery about bringing financial information to a city, so it's a little bit tough to get that from people, so, you know, that's...
Yeah, I still, I don't, I don't look forward to any other discussion, like, it was just so subjective, and we did it at least at two of the meetings, and it just, I don't know, it just went round and round, and so...
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the way it's been going.
So, I don't know, if there's no other, you know, I am sensitive to people's, you know, sensitivity of their financial information, things like that, but I did think that this was the, this demolition hearing, kind of SOP they have, was something that, that I thought I would bring up that would make it, the process a little bit more rigorous and maybe cut down the amount of time that we deal with some of these properties, so... Quick to Commissioner Rizwald's point, you know, a roof quite often comes into play here, and we consider that critical. We can't have community groups or volunteers in the neighborhood put on a roof. It has to be a licensed roofer. Can't we require, after that first time, next time you come back, we want to see a contract by a licensed roofer? They don't have it, it's not going to go on. And just, you know, do that. Another question for you, Mr. Kramer, and I know that Ms. Waters isn't here, can we require a bond with these people?
I wouldn't want to, I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you have any idea, Ms. Williamson?
I, I don't know.
I mean, we need to get these people to have some skin in the game, as Commissioner Rizwald does, and we can't let this go on for a year. Keep in mind, we let it go on for a year, and people say, well, it's been a year they're working on it. No, the thing has gone to hell for five years before that. So, you know, these are six, seven, eight-year processes, they're not a one-year process. So, any way that we, you know, if they got a roof issue, where's your contract with a licensed roofer that we can verify when it's going to be done, and they've got to, they're going to do it? And if we can't bond them, I'm just thinking out loud there, I don't know how practical that is, but somehow, you know, they've got to come up. The roof is a great example, because you don't have a roof done, you know. You can't have a roof done unless it's a licensed roof. So, I don't know, that's, that's where, I think it's something we should consider and would be, would be helpful in terms of making it a better process, more efficient, and, you know, benefit the city, but also the property owners in terms of eliminating some, what's it, eliminating some subjectivity that goes into this.
Very subjective, but it's difficult.
I know, I mean, at least with the one that's coming back, she said that she didn't have the financial means, and we, you know, we have extensions, so if we had this in place, she still wouldn't have the financial means.
Right.
I just want, don't want to get in the position where we're limiting our flexibility, I think, and I'm not saying we can't put something in place. Bids are not bad, formal, having a formal bid, you know, a lot of, a roofer is probably not going to come and give you a formal bid if he goes out there and he doesn't believe that it's a viable job a lot of times, so maybe formal bids. You could, you could require a contract now.
I would say a contract.
I don't want to...
Oh, I would say a contract, I don't want a bid, I want a contract.
The commission can do that, I mean, you don't have to have that written here, you can, you can basically set the conditions for an extension on an individual basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just think about that as we've gone through these sessions, but this, this kind of, yeah, we, we could, and I'm not saying it's gotta be exactly like this, but I think we need to tighten up the, the process in terms of, once somebody says they're really hurt, they're gonna take care of these critical items, and, and if they have the, having the resources, physical resources to do this critical.
Yeah, I, and I agree, but, um, I think you'd have to, you know, have to have a definition of what you consider critical, or some examples, other than just a roof, uh, in order to have this process, so it's more concrete, instead, you know, instead of, you know, being a little in the gray area.
Well, when you, when you do the evaluation, I think, if it ain't coming upon you in your office to say, these are critical, and I think we would agree with that.
Yeah, so we would determine that, and that would be, as part of, that would be part of what they, the property owners would be given at our first contact, here are the items, yes.
Definition, saying the possibilities of being critical.
That would help us a lot, I think all of this would help us a lot, and then, I was reminded after the last nightmare meeting that we had.
Yeah, one more coming up, don't worry.
I know, I know, um, was it, if somebody was living in this house, they'd be able to get help, you know, or be able to apply for assistance if they were at that income level, or, at least if they got fixed up enough that they could live in it, then it would not be an issue to turn to them.
And another thing, uh, I think you've pointed out, once these are vacant for a year, it, the building inspector has to go inside to give another certificate of occupancy, am I correct in that?
Uh, I, I don't wanna speak here quickly, but I believe it's more related to the electricity being turned back on. Once electricity has been turned off for a period of time, then it has to be inspected, um, before that can be turned back on.
And, so, uh, Mr. Burdette, or somebody from our op, from your, uh, from the building inspector's office goes in, and I think another thing we'd say is, you must have a certificate of occupancy. You could, uh, you know, I'm thinking, one of the houses has been vacant for so long, hasn't had power on for years, multiple years, it's definitely gonna have to have an inspection inside, and I think this owner even admitted, well, inside, you know, we don't have plumbing or, you know, electricity, or, or all bad.
Yeah, and that's...
That's a whole different standard, though. What, somebody's is related to, is the external?
Is the exterior.
Not, not that somebody can move back in, but that it meets the property management.
Yeah, and the state statute is pretty clear on demolition criteria, um, and it's strictly for the exterior of the building.
Okay, okay, disregard.
So, for better or worse, that's how the statute is strict.
Okay.
Miss Hurley, can I ask you one more thing? Once, you know, the decision is made, even on the, you know, we, we're gonna proceed with demolition, what's, how much, and I know you, you list some things that have to be done, but how long does that in general take?
It's a minimum of six weeks. Everything that we have to get done, once there's a vote, we're just move forward.
Commissioner Wilson, you have something?
Yeah. Yes, uh, to go back to what Commissioner Pricey was saying, can you give me an example, uh, Madam Mayor? Cause I, I mean, it was kind of muffled, I, I, like, if we decided to grant an extension, but a contract has to be, uh, provided, like, can, can you give me an example of it? I'm trying to, trying to gather it all visually.
Well, what I, uh, propose is, let's say it's a roof, we need to see a contract from a licensed roofer saying, I'm gonna put this roof on, that, you know, they've taken some earnest money or something, and they're gonna put it on in the next 30, 45 days, whatever it might be, not sometime in the future, but something concrete, if, for example, on a roof. And because they have to be licensed in the, in the city, and, uh, it can't be, well, my neighbors are gonna help me, you know, put on the roof, can't be done that way. My neighbor's a licensed roofer.
So, so if the contract says 60 days, will our extension be based upon what the contractor says, or is it still gonna be up to the commission what they said?
Might as well, I'd like extensions anyway.
It would be up to the commission, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'll always be up to...
It'll always be up to the commission.
Well, and I got you, I'm just, I'm just making it, making it out loud, but I got...
No, I'm...
No, it's good, it's good, no.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, this is a difficult...
I appreciate it, thank you.
It's a difficult topic, okay. Well, I think, not looking for the next round, but at least if the next review will, will have some idea of, how long has this place been vacant? And I think we can address that a little better when we have this...
Yeah, so we're, our, our goal is to have this sort of in shape before we start our next round, um, and we also have, you know, the land bank option that's coming back here in a, in a couple of weeks, and we wanna have that fully in place before we start the next round, so, um, we really wanna have this kind of shorted up before we move ahead, and we still have a few, as you know, hanging out there from the last round anyway, so...
Good. Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
What we talked about in terms of...
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get some, some options back, and...
And I'll run these by David, the signed contract issue, and a couple things that Commissioner Griswold mentioned, and then we'll hopefully bring this back, because we, it's about time to start on the next round, um, so, you know, in the next, uh, meeting or two, um, say, hey, here's how we're gonna go forward with our process. And I think I did get consensus that the changes that Julie suggested, notification, prioritization, that better records are all be put in place.
Yep.
Absolutely. Okay. Are there any other questions, Miss Hurley, or come, come on this thing? Thank you for all your hard work.